Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome back to everybody. Today is December 12th. This is the afternoon session. Our next agenda item is a presentation of Boise National Forest, so whoever wants to lead on, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure to be here with you. My name is Dennis Benson and I am the acting district ranger here at the Cascade Ranger District. Been here for a month and a half, and I'll be with you until middle of February. Wanted to come and introduce a subject to the commission for the last, well, I'll introduce Jim as well.
We know Jim.
Yeah, as our fuel specialist. He's our assistant fire management officer. So it's great to have him. He's been involved in planning what I'm about to share for years. And so all this has really come together nicely. My regular job, I work on the Deschutes National Forest. I'm the recreation program manager there. But most of my life has been in the central Oregon area, and so it's great to come to Idaho and experience something a little different. So the Boise and Pet National Forest have been working for the last year on funding through the bipartisan infrastructure law that was signed on November 15th of 2021. This law provides significant forest restoration funds meant to help eligible forests with large-scale restoration projects, projects like thinning, mastication, burning, and roadside clearing with the overall intent of protecting communities from the threat of wildfire. I think, I think we all know it needs to happen. It needs to occur. Well, we have a great opportunity to do that. So today, Jim and I would like to cover the following, as this is a very timely topic. Just a few months ago, portions of our community were under evacuation notice because of the Four Corners fire. So I want to introduce you to yet another Forest Service acronym. It's called the SIL. It stands for the Southwest Idaho Landscape Restoration. And the plan is to, and, so we're going to introduce you to that. We're going to talk about planned prescribed fire, because Jim's been working on this again for years. It's just we've never gotten to the point of putting fire on the ground. It's time to get fire on the ground. And so we'll be talking about that.
You mean in a planned approach?
In a planned approach, not like New Mexico. And then we'd like-
Can you guarantee that?
No. The wind always shifts direction. And then we want to visit with you as a commission a little bit about how to get our communities engaged in this topic. There seems to be a disconnect between prescribed fire, timber treatment, and our homeowners that may have their second homes here while they live in Boise, and they don't know or understand fire. So we, we want to talk with you about that, because we do, we've got a grand plan here, and that grand plan includes giving this presentation to the community on January the 25th from 5:30 to 7:30 down at the Legionnaire Hall. How do we get the community to come and to participate and to become active? And so-
Food. Tell them there's a fire.
Oh, that was beautiful. Yeah, food. Bring pizza. I thought about that, since I'm getting pretty empty. So there is a sense of urgency around this, and, and this is a message from not only our chief, but our regional forester, that we have communities around the West that are burning up. And there's a lot of concern around that. And this funding just happens to come at, at a perfect time for our community. And, and it should be foremost on everybody's mind after shoveling snow. There's another community that I currently live in that wasn't so fortunate. And so Bend, Oregon had a real wake-up call on August 4th of 1990, when 22 homes in west Bend were destroyed in 12 hours. And this was an impetus for that community. And I'm really fortunate to be there some 30-plus years later and see how the community got behind the Forest Service and the BLM in doing some very active forest management, thinning, burning. We're to the point now where we're able to burn right up to the city, city boundary. And the community wants more. They're asking for more. All you have to do is drive down Highway 97 or out the Cascade Lakes Highway, and you can see how active forest management, putting fire on the landscape is protecting the communities. Two examples, just a couple of years ago, we had the Two Bulls Fire. They came raging at town from the north. Two fires came together. It was something to behold. And it stopped just outside of town because of active forest management and the use of prescribed fire. What was the fire that you mentioned?
Skeleton Fire?
Skeleton Fire, which was out by Chinahatt, kind of east of town. Same situation. The fire came raging towards town, lost homes, another one of those wake-up calls.
Then 2003, there was the 18 Fire. It came right up against the private boundary. It actually tied into the skeleton fire, and that's how we controlled it when I worked there. We kind of drove it right into the two fires that were out there, stopped that from burning more homes. But with the wind conditions and the topography relays, it drives everything right into Bend, either on the west side or on that southeast side. It just funnels everything right towards those communities.
Yep. And so the Two Bulls Fire, we had ash on our, on landing on our roof that was like that, and we were three miles away. So if you know Bend, this is the Old Mill District, and then this is Highway 20 coming into town. So that fire was just on the hill right behind it.
Wow.
Okay, so much for the drama. I thought so. All right. So the bipartisan infrastructure law, otherwise known as the bill, was passed on November 15th, 2021. It invests about 5.5 million in lands and resource managed by the Forest Service. So that's a lot of money. So the goal of the bill is resiliency. I can't see that. I'm colorblind.
And I was gonna say, you guys need to change your font colors, because that's hard.
Look better on my screen.
It did.
So building resiliency to wildfire through the, through the SIL. So we, as a forest, we're getting about $33 million to invest over the next five to seven years to treat areas within a 1.7 million acre area. So I'll show you that in a minute.
I'll let you get three point-
Thirty-one.
Thirty-three.
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 Dennis is at for Boise National Forest and?
And Payette.
Okay, for the region.
Yep. Yep. So I'll show you the SIL boundary here in a minute. So the goal is to, so overall, the big, big picture, right now, there are 10 areas selected in the country. And the Boise-Payette are one of those 10 areas. Another one of those areas is the Deschutes National Forest, because they've been doing really good work. There's some other ones coming up that we should be hearing about here in the next few months. But we, we're getting 33 million to move some of this forward. So the idea is to treat about 425,000 acres on the Deschutes, or that's the boundary.
Some of the Boise Payette, right?
Well, that's the Boise side, and then 505,000 acres on the Payette. That makes up the SIL.
Gotcha.
So the, the key element of this thing is landscape scale effort to reduce the risk of catastrophic and undesirable wildfire while increasing the resiliency of the landscape to change climate, to changing climate and other stressors. So we're pretty excited about this thing. So here it is, you know, big 30,000-foot view of this thing. So from Garden City, include around Council Bear. Really, this, our mountainscape that just burned is a major part of that. So you got your picture? I can, I can send it.
Yeah.
That'd be great if you'd send that to us.
So Cascade is in this, and that's what we're here to focus on today. The objectives of, of this, and I've already mentioned this, to protect the values at risk from wildfire, reduce effects of large uncharacteristic wildfire, which we're seeing a lot more of, which you guys just experienced, protect our communities and our recreation values. We've got a lot of assets around recreation development, as well the state, and other groups like Tamarack. That's significant investments going on up there. A sustained timber industry. Timber's gonna, gonna get a big boost from this. It will improve watershed health, forest resilience, fisheries, and wildlife habitat.
So within your little red lines, so the meadows, that is a block, and I'm assuming in the Smiths Ferry, that's a block. So Donley is left out of that?
Oh, there's a Barrow Brownlee McCall Council.
Yep. So, so it's-
Black, all of the black.
Yeah, the black line is the actual SIL boundary.
Got it.
So the red boundary is the actual fire sheds, the water sheds.
Okay.
Okay, now that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you. Glad you're here.
I am too.
So, so I just, I grabbed some pictures just to kind of highlight what we're talking about. And I think you guys get this. You know, the before, you know, you've got the brush, you've got all the heavy fuels, you've got all that stuff. And then afterwards, completely different.
A lot of ladder fuels.
Yeah. Get rid of the ladder fuels, get it all on the ground. And, and it's proven to work, which is a great thing. Here's an example that Jim gave me from Willow South. You know, before, on the left, super thick, a lot of ladder fuels, a lot of potential to carry. And then after, much cleaner. And then after a couple of years, we get forest back, it would green up and be, be an open forest.
Can I ask a question while you're on the stuff? So on the left, how long does it take for the reforestation to reach that limit again? Is it 10 years, 20 years? How often, I guess my overall question, how often do you have to burn it to keep it in some kind of manage?
My rule of thumb is, is every five to 10 years, we need to re, put fire back on the landscape to manage it.
Wow. That's sad.
Yeah. In some areas, especially West Mountain, as fast as it grows over there, you might have to come back before then. But typically five, ideally it's seven years, but somewhere between five and 10 years is where you need to do your maintenance burn after your first ignition. So, yeah.
And I've got a picture in here that's, that shows prescribed fire and what it looks like when it's in maintenance mode, because it works really, really well. So we're planning on doing these projects through timber harvest and thinning, mastication to clear away brush. This goes on a lot in central Oregon, because the, the ground is pretty flat, and it's like mow, just go and mow. Works really well. Prescribed fire. So this is a managed stand. So this is a maintenance fire, and you can see that all the trees are well spaced. The fire goes through low intensity. And then if, as soon as you do the original treatment, and then you go back in every five to seven years, it's really easy to maintain it. So that's our hope. And then we can do pile burning where necessary. And so some of the areas Jim's talking about will be close to private land, and the best prescription in those situations would be pile burning and go in and do it in the snow. Oops, wrong way. So really, the bottom line, and, and you know, I wrote this, so I have to read it, because it means something to me.
You didn't memorize it?
No. Our overall intent and goal is to protect our way of life, the people we love and the views we cherish. And although I've been here for a month and a half, it, this is such a gorgeous place. And to put some pretty significant leader's intent into this, it's to protect our way of life. And it's a way of life that I, I appreciate. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jim now, and Jim's going to talk about the details. I get to do the 30,000-foot. He's going to talk about the details, which I'm really excited about, because Jim has done, done an outstanding job over years, and now he's got the opportunity to implement it and to make it happen. Can you still your computer, please? Any questions while he?
Well, I think Dennis, you know, I don't know how to ask this without sounding rude. I don't need to be rude, but I've been on the board for 10 years, and we've been hearing this for all that time. We're gonna burn more, we're gonna burn more, and we're gonna burn more.
I know.
And it doesn't ever seem to happen. My question to you is, how are you guys going to get through that hump where we can actually see this happen?
And, and that's, that's a great point. And I've been hearing that same thing. And, you know, I think this last year, we were set up to actually implement some of it, and then the New Mexico situation happened, and the, the chief of the Forest Service shut it all down. And then we had the unfortunate reality of, of the Four Corners fire, and Jim was ready to burn, but others weren't, because we were concerned about the community after just choking on smoke for three months, to then put more smoke into it. I think we've got a good, solid plan, and it's been my clear leader's intent for us to get to the point that in April, Jim gets to start burning. And so that's been my clear leader's intent. That's why I'm sitting here today, and that's why we have a public meeting scheduled for January 25th, because of our clear leader's intent to get moving on this. Because honestly, I drove around Lake Cascade for the first time the week that Jim should have been able to burn, and we weren't burning because of the concern of smoke, but the Payette was burning gangbusters. And I'm like, there's, what's wrong with this picture? So I've been saying this since I've been here, and I will be once the permanent ranger shows up, that we have to get fire on the landscape, and we, we need to start doing these treatments. And I think we've got a good plan forward. And then we've got enough backlog to we get the, the NEPA done, we get the NEPA cleared, we start implementing. And then we've got other projects that are already ready to go, that we just need to act on it. And it takes some very clear, bold leadership to get things moving. So I can't guarantee anything, because I'm not going to be here, but that's been my clear intent.
If you're looking at primarily like under burning, and I know you mentioned a lot of pile burning as well, which means that you're masticating, doing whatever throughout the season, and then burn in the fall, which is good. You get into the spring burn program, I spent a lot of years here on the Payette and fire. And we lost a lot of opportunities to burn in the spring, primarily because of cleanup. And you know, how heavy is this going to rely on being able to do that, because you have cleanup. And you got some rain and stuff. And for all of it, you're gonna have all kinds of issues with that particular. And I know nationwide, you're talking about a little bit more about burning than wanting to burn.
So there's, there's a lot of talk going around nationwide on how we're going to meet this SIL objective on, on target-wise for, for burning. Whether it be activity fuels burning, landscape burning, pile burning, whatever the cases may be, right? So there's a lot of talk about that. We're, we're strategizing now to, and there's some monies available, so we can bring folks from Region 8 back east out here to help us. One, if we don't have a burn window, they can help us prep other units, so we get ahead of the game. And two, we go back there and help those folks as well. And then we're trying to coordinate with the Payette and us on, on prioritizing burns. So they'll burn our unit, then we'll burn a unit, because we're competing for the same resources, and that's the issue that we have. Cascade has the least amount of, of personnel on the Boise National Forest. So we're, we're trying to prioritize, and Willow South, and I'll get to that, is our number one priority, and it is the priority for the, for Boise as well. So we're focusing, are shifting all of our resources up here as soon as we have this window. And then we'll move out to the Clear Creek area to focus on three burn units out there, and we'll get into that as I go through this.
And there's Fontestic is that part of Willow South?
It is not. But we, Fontestic is, as we, we'll go through all that, because there's slides in here that'll talk about that. And I'll talk in depth about how we're breaking those, the Fontestic up into three different cells, and where we're at in that. So I'm going to walk up here real quick, so it kind of gives you an idea. So right here is, this is the Fontestic. Right, sorry, right here, Fontestic. This is the French Hazard. It goes all the way to the state piece here. This is our new proposal that goes all the way up to the no-business area. We'll, we'll go talk about that. We have Skunk Creek that's out here, and then this is a large area of lost horse, and they have it broke out into different polygons. This is the large landscape area that we're looking at doing all the treats, treatments between Boise and, and the Payette. And like I said, these, these red lines are the high-fire priority watersheds that we want to do. So here's all the projects broken down, and I'll start over here. This is Lost Horse. Everything that's in the red polka dot is, is either commercial harvest and followed up by active fuel burning, tree slash.
Okay.
There's some, the purple ones down here are the landscape burns. There's 384 acres, 81 acres, something like that. It's just slated for landscape burning. And then these areas in here are all, all the yellow is non-commercial thinning units. So there's, there's 1,000 acres laid out in the Clear Creek corridor and this roadside treatment. So this is the Skunk Creek project that we just did. And that's been a part of these two VFC committee and stuff. So this is the 417 major road, also a highly traveled route. And that, and so the, again, the red polka dots are the burn units. The yellows are the plantations that we're planning on thinning. There's 200 and something acres in plantations, 297 acres of roadside. The roadside, that 417 is 150 feet, 170 feet either side, or excuse me, it's 75 feet either side, for a total of 150 feet. And it's going to come right here to forest boundary, all the way around, back out to there. So we're going to have a nice buffer across that road. This is the Fontestic we talked about, and it's all color coordinated with the greens, the commercial, the yellows of the plantations. Willow South, a priority area, which is all under the French Hazard project. And we signed this in 2018. This one was last year, last year, and then in 2020 was the Lost Horse project.
And one thing on the Hazard project is, we're having to revisit that because of a change of condition due to the Four Corners fire. And so we've got our NEPA team currently working on that, and we're hoping to have that done by May? No?
No. We want it done by April.
April.
Yep. And I'll go into a little bit more of that as when we get to, to the Barren disparity stuff, and we'll talk about that. Okay, so in relationship, here is Willow South. So this smaller version is right here. So this is Carol McGregor's and Mike House in the state piece. It's right, runs right through here. So it's right adjacent to Carol's property and Mike House. It's right here. So, and then Mike House is, we've been working with Mike, or at least I have a little bit, and got him with Stephanie Nelson from Valley County. So Stephanie's done some great work on Mike's property, and that, and I talked to Brenda, his daughter. She wants to do more. She wants to even actually do a commercial harvest in there. So that'll open up that buffer as well. So that corner of the lake will be protected pretty well. But this is our priority area. And then that, the photos that Dennis showed you of the, of the logging, right here, this area, this junction. All this has already been harvested. It's been non-commercial thin for, for breakage damage stuff. Now we're going to start burning this. There's 224 acres that were slated for under burning, starting as soon as we get a window.
Jim, the stuff that's kind of gray in, in the middle of all that, that's just going to be natural. Just going to leave that.
So what this, what this one doesn't show here is there's plantations here, here. This is a natural stand here, and then another natural stand here. This is all going to be thin, hand-piled and burned. And it's going to be done under, I laid it out this last summer. We're working on a, on a thinning contract this, this winter to add your 700, was it 800 acres, non-commercial thinning into FY23 thinning contract. So that will be treated in there as well to some degree. The stuff that's outside, down through here, this falls within the Mortem Moss timber cell. So this has been harvested already, and I'll show you a map of that. So this will be treated, this big block will be treated. This is a, the riparian area is through there, but we'll grab the plantations that are up above. And then in here, there's plantation. So we'll grab what we can through there, this large natural stand, and then this, the chunk through here is already commercial harvest, and then we'll grab natural stand.
Can I ask just a ricky question? So non-commercial sale, or non-commercial, just means the trees are too small to sell? Nobody will buy them?
Yep, that's correct.
So you're just going to take them out and then burn them?
Yep. So the NEPA's are set up to eight inches and less on the DBH at breast height. So right here, if they're eight inches and less, there's no commercial value. So then we'll go in and we'll hand fill them, buck them up, pile them, and then in the wintertime, we'll come back in and burn those.
That's a really good question that you asked, right? Because a lot of the forest is non-commercial. People think that there's big giant trees everywhere in there. Not there's thousands of acres of stuff that nobody really wants.
Yep.
Yep. There's a, there's some, some post and poll markets maybe, but-
Right.
You can't wait for those.
Yep, exactly. So like I said, this is our number one priority to start going after. The 404 to the 404G is a heavy traveled route through the summertime and that. But we're going to go in in mid-April, and we're going to plow that from coming off McGregor's property all the way up to the very top at the end where the 404G opens up. The units come open before the road opens up, so we're going to spend the money to go in and blade that open, so we have access, and we can go up there and tree well burn, or when the unit comes into prescription, we can go burn the whole unit. So there's a couple of phases that we'll be doing in there. Here's the French Campbell landscape burning. There's three units worth 68 acres. The purple unit four is right against the French, French Creek subdivision. And then it's, it's just north of French Creek Campground. Number three is kind of butter, or borders that through the campground itself. There's a little drainage that I cut it off right in there. And then the yellow one is down just past Anderson Snow Park.
And both those just burn?
No.
No, no.
The fire never came down there. Fire stayed up above that, and I'll show you that in, in the slide that we got. So the fire never impacted that area at all.
We've had some discussion on that area over there with Stephanie, who by the way is on this, listening to this. But, you know, just getting people over in that area involved with her programs.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So this is one of the areas that we were ready to move forth on, on this last fall, this, you know, when burn season came around. But due to the smoky impact from Four Corners, we decided not to, not to burn that, because, you know, the community's been eating smoke for, for months, and it was like, we'll give them a break. And then Willow South, same thing. You know, we didn't want to impact McGregor's and House and those guys with the smoke for there. So we, we backed off on these two prescribed burn units for areas. So here's French Hazard in a whole. So there's 6,223 acres in the French Hazard analysis area. Willow South, French Campbell, which got impacted by the Four Corners fire. And then this from here up is the Hurt Wick Timber cell. So there's 188, 87 acres through here that got impacted of the Hurt Wick, that we're, we're now going to be doing a SER, re-analyzing it, all this area from here to see what the impacts are, see if there's still economical value in the timber, and how we're going to move forward with this and try to salvage all that timber.
How long can you wait on a salvage like that without it, the trees just not being needed?
Typically, we, it's about a year, maybe two, most depending on the species. So ponderosa Doug will hold their value a little bit longer, but the subalpine, or not subalpine, but the grand firs and spruces, you typically have a year. And then they turn blue and they don't want them. But here's, here's how it impacted off the, off the Four Corners fire. So what this is telling us is the grades, low, very low, or no burn severity.
They don't exist.
Yellows are, are the lows, oranges are the moderate, and the dark reds are the highest severity areas. You can see down in Silver Creek and Wick Creek, French Creek is where it hit the hardest the first time it came out. It burnt the hottest down those drainages. We have a lot of severity in there, and it hit, hit a lot of this commercial value that's in there. This is the area that, that didn't hurt Wick Timber cell, I showed you on the previous slide. And then this is a French Campbell. But you can see the overlay, it's low to moderate on the burn soils, so there's severity in there. Not saying we're not going to have higher severity in there. I'm just saying that right now, it's not showing that. It's only showing two to three percent of high severity throughout that 13,700 and something acres, right? So we, we're going to be doing a SER to analyze everything that's within our boundary, to see what kind of impacts, what do we need to do for hydraulic wildlife, fisheries. To see what kind of impacts, what do we need to do for hydraulic wildlife, fisheries? Any of that type of stuff is all gonna be reanalyzed. And then we'll come out with a paper saying this is what our business is.
Jim, do you usually wait till after the spring, after a fire like that, to go back and evaluate that area? Does the spring change a lot of that?
Yeah, and you're gonna start showing, I mean, we all, we all seen fire up there, and right now it looks still pretty green. There's some black places and some places are starting to turn a little bit red. But in the spring, when, when the second fire order effects come in, and the tree doesn't know it's dead yet. So it's still sitting there. But after that sap comes down and it can't go back, back up in the spring, then it's gonna start dying out, and you're gonna start seeing more red. And that's when we have to act, because we have one year from that point to try to salvage that place. Not everyone.
I'm just thinking about road impacts in all those areas too.
That's the other thing.
Been working on grants to be able to replace all those culverts over there with firewise culverts.
Yep, and then we, in our analysis, we covered some of the, the culvert replacements in some of those areas. And I know our team's already been out there looking at those, trying to figure out how to improve those culverts. So I guess, any questions on, on the burn severity and how it impacted those areas?
We just, um, kinda just recently sent out notification to all the landowners in there to consider flood insurance.
Yeah, so some of that area looks really good. I mean, I didn't get out there because of the restrictions in there, and then I was on annually, but I got to some of the areas through there. And some of that area is looking really good. It, it, you know, the brush is still intact in a lot of places, it did burn down on, on the, on the duff layer. But it's gonna have enough needle casted, it's gonna stabilize. Some of those three drainages, Silver, Van Wett, and French Creek, what got burnt the hardest. You might have some outflows through there as, if we get heavy rains later in the spring or something. But I don't, my personal opinion, and I probably shouldn't say this, but is, I don't see us having too big of an impact from, from flooding in, in that, in those areas.
Yeah, that was, to me, I, I watched this burn and I thought, you know, probably we wouldn't, we wouldn't have been able to achieve what you guys are trying to do.
So.
Better.
Yeah, that fire did a lot of good out there, surprisingly. I mean, people's like, oh my God, we lost the whole stand. Well, if you really look at it, we didn't lose that whole stand, and it did a nice underburn, better, better underburning conditions than what we could have done. Um, and I'll use this, this area for example, on this north line, right here. When they come around, they, they punched in a handline and that opened it up, just tried to burn off of it, it wouldn't burn. All the fuel that they took out, they brought it all back in, put it in there, lit it off again to get the fire material through to, to give them a decent line. That's how, how wet it was, and the conditions that we were in wouldn't allow it to burn. In my personal opinion, we dodged a bullet in the summer.
Yep.
Because we had the wet spring, and we're sitting in a PL three versus a PL four.
Yep.
Preparedness level three, four, five even. If we're in a four and five, we would not have the air resources and we would not have the amount of personnel that we had. Until it came out, and then we would have, they would have prioritized it a little bit differently.
You were able to get all the teams you needed.
Yes, absolutely. So there, that area is protected, but there's still some potential in there, so we wanna do more.
That's what I was asking, because I knew that some of it didn't burn, so we've got five years before you should be burning it again.
Yes.
I'm documenting that on video right now.
Dang it.
Well, that's some of it.
We have put you guys on.
So.
Well, I gotta say, I'm, I'm proud of the fact you guys got it put up.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it'd have gone so much bigger, so much faster.
Yep.
North or south?
You know, and there's continuous fuels, and typically the winds are out of the southwest. And just like the herd fire of two thousand thirteen, it came down and it sidesloped because it caught the winds. And it just followed that tonography across there, just like that, that state piece did up on Tamarack a few years back. When they lit that pile and it just burnt side hill across there because it caught the winds, and that's how it's gonna travel. This one had a predominant wind coming out of the west northwest, which pushed it. And then we added kind of that northeast wind to push it back over on the Emmett district, which is unusual for, for our summer events. Typically, they're out of the southwest or west.
And it headed back against the mountain, dude. It seemed like it actually stayed it even off the lake a lot of it.
Yep.
On that one, that's kinda interesting to watch.
Yep, for sure. Alright, so here is the Fontesic cell. Just shy of three thousand acres. We split this up into three timber cells. This is the grassy flat timber cell, which just recently sold this fall. So they're gonna come in this spring and start implementing the temp roads through here. And then with, with commercial harvest starting sometime mid-spring, at summertime. This right to here is the Fontesic timber cell. So all of this has been harvested through here where we can. These units here are dropped out, there was no commercial value left in those because when we do that through our NEPA process and, and that, the book, they already hid it and they died out, there was the virtue there, it's like there's no economic value, so therefore, we're not gonna. But you'll still see some, some areas up in there that are gray or still a little bit, and we're still having impact from, from bark beetle and stuff now, coming in after the tussic. So, but this is, this is the French, or Fontesic. That up in the corner, all the way to the top of the picture road there is, is the Mormos timber cell, that one's also completed. You know, and they, they finished these two this summer. They still got a little bit of road work to do in here to close out, a little bit of non-commercial thinning, rock scatter type stuff and breaking. And then we'll come in and start looking at burning bits. And then we have between Fontesic and Mormos. Hundred and thirty acres laid out for non-commercial thinning, just in plantations. And then we'll, where they didn't harvest, my plan is to get out there this summer in twenty-three, lay out the rest of that, so we'll have additional acres. We're anticipating another four hundred acres in there, non-commercial thinning. That area will be treated for the park. I already know that looking at this area through here, there's a lot of non-commercial thinning that's going to occur. We just have to wait for them to finish their boundaries, and get out there because that area was closed under the fire restriction. This is, this is our priority for the summer coming up, and then we'll move over to the Lost Horse. And that, there's thirteen hundred and some acres on. We got a very active non-commercial thinning project coming up, that's gonna be in contract, and it's gonna last for several years. Like I said, the Lost Horse skunk, nine hundred and ninety-seven acres. Little over seven hundred acres between Herdwick and Mormos and Willow. And then what we're, we're shooting for is another fifteen hundred acres going into contract for FY twenty-four.
You guys grind it all instead of burning it?
So mastication or?
Chipping.
Or chipping?
Chipping.
No, we don't have the personnel to do that.
Or the market?
Or the market to do it.
An interesting kind of a subject going forward though, is, um, we've been getting, having a little momentum in that discussion here about doing some grinding, because we, we have a lot of the huge stuff. It just burned this weekend. And, um, tons and tons of stuff that get brought off private ground, we have to deal with. And I know that, uh, Evergreen's been thinking a little bit about expanding the program down there. I guess the question that I would have, you guys with these different bills, is there some help in there to maybe get the, the non-federal agent people kinda geared up to kinda help with a little bit of this too?
I know that our region has been working what they call IDIQ contract. And that's getting operators in there to help us with the burning and the thinning and stuff like that. So we probably should get something set up into that type of contract that helps with the chipping or, or not, see if that option is in there. I know that we have a contract set up for mastication. And we are planning on doing nine hundred and fifty-eight acres of mastication in this French Hazard project, along that thirty-five percent lower. So this whole block piece, it's between our commercial and non-commercial thing, will be masticated.
Well, masticating, essentially, that's just a, a different process for chipping, but leaving it on the ground.
Correct, yes.
And I guess that gets to our point, well, can we do that? I mean, that is, that, that part of it hopefully has been considered pretty seriously. Not only to just deal with, take care of stuff, but to pull out a smoke and variety of other things.
So it's, it's been my experience with mastication. You put that on the ground, it rearranges that fuel, makes a duff layer in there. If a fire comes in there, it sits on it, it doesn't burn through it as well, it sits there and smolder, so it gives us a better chance for.
To put it out, yeah.
Yep, that's, that's why we're looking at doing big boundaries around the private with the mastication. As long as we're under that thirty-five percent slope, anything above that, we're gonna do by hand and then burn those piles. So it'll give us a defensible space around those. But as far as bringing actual, like a drum chipper or just a portable chipper in there, we don't have the means for that right now. But that's not saying we can't come up with an alternative to, to do that. It's gonna take a little bit of us, more planning on our part to get that.
Jim, is the challenge for mastication, the slope of the ground?
Yeah.
Thirty-five percent is kind of the max?
That's, that's the max that they'll go. Yep, and then we, we only have one person locally that does it, and that's John, I can't think of John's last name, he works with Stephanie quite a bit up in McCall area.
John Ledrickson?
Yes, and there is other folks on the contract, but they're coming in extremely high. I dealt with Bureau of Recreational Land on, on the S Bridge in, in Donley. We put that out, that fifty acres out for contract to come in for a hundred thousand dollars. That's not feasible for fifty acres. So we have to, we had to went back, and we ended up doing it in-house, and then we also hired, um, the old conservation corps to come in and, and help us thin and pile that stuff, so.
Could you please destroy the S Bridge while you're on it, so you can replace it?
We don't wanna do that.
I know you don't. We don't want to either.
So here's the Lost Horse in its entirety, so there's ten thousand six hundred and ninety-one acres that we have analyzed. So all this stuff that's in brown is, is commercial harvest followed by activity burning. And that's cleaning up some of the fuels and stuff, whether it be non-commercial thinning underneath that, fire by, followed by fire, or activity fuels. Not with commercial harvest, right now. The green is the inventory robo-sary, this is the piece rock, and this is the stony meadows. That is just strictly landscape burning in there. Never had fire into those areas. Both, both planned for the fall, this mountain trail runs here. Stony Mountain Trail Motorcycle Foot Traffic runs up to the top, those are gonna be used as our control lines. So we're gonna open those up, about sixty, fifty, fifty-two feet, sixty feet. And then blocking those edges, and then we'll come back in the next year and run fire all the way down to the four oh mine. And then down to there's the center ridge that comes through here, just backing down there in the fall, and then take that all out. That's eighteen hundred acres, nine hundred acres, four hundred and twenty-seven acres. A lot of burning coming out.
There's a lot of commercial harvests in there.
There's a lot of commercial harvests in there. Yep, and then the stuff that doesn't have any color in there, there's plantations in there, but those plantations are not ready to be thinned yet. They're super small. And some of those other natural stands, we'll, we'll look at those, that's where we're gonna be trying to get laid out in FY twenty-three this summer.
When you tell the public you're gonna burn that, I mean, is that a one-week burn, is that a one-month burn? How long does it take to burn something like that?
So it, we have to do it in stages. So if you do the small units, you know, here, here's some of the units that we're, we're considering landscape burning. This could be a one-day burn using either a drone or a helicopter. Same with this, intent would be to block in this one day, and then come back in and burn it. Or we block in it one week and then let it do its thing, and then we come back in the following week and do that. But these are, essentially with helicopters, these are one day. But it's gonna take two entries, maybe three entries to get us our buffer that we want in there. Or we just go and put a helicopter there, sort of.
If you, yeah.
I think that'll be important to share with the public, because I'm not familiar with burning that much. So I'm envisioning the next five years of not having family reunions here, because we're a smoky home time. So it's, you know, it sounds like when you're doing this, it's very controlled, and, and the public is not going to suffer a whole summer worth of smoke.
Right, correct.
That's, that's important to share.
So on, on this Lost Horse, we're gonna do this in probably four stages. So we'll do the, the three hundred and eighty-one acres of landscape burning along the corridor. And then we'll come back after the commercial harvest, and we'll wrap this. And then the power burning will happen as they finish. They've already finished three units in here, so in the fall, we'll burn those three units, and then we'll wait until the next unit, the next fall, to get the rest of it right. So we'll do this over a period of time with a small impact in that. When I did the modeling for it, we can only do a thousand acres at a time on Lost Horse. Anything more than that, it turns around, comes down the corridor, it impacts the division, and Round Valley, and then we're gonna fly. So you have to make sure we have the right winds coming out, headed to the northeast. So we, it's gonna take some timing on our part, so it's gonna, it's gonna take years to get everything burnt. So we're gonna start, start small and then try to go big. And the, the intent is, is get these small ones along the private boundaries, and then along the roads, so we, we're not having the big impacts on that. Down the corridor or the private boundary.
And I think it's important to note, too, that just in the robo-sary is, every year is planned to do about five hundred and thirty thousand acres a year. But this is not just happening here in this forest, but it's all over the state.
Yeah.
Every year, so the smoke is gonna be an issue eventually, and I hope political doesn't shut us all down.
Oh, I, I appreciate what I just heard, that we're, that that's also part of your plan, you're not just gonna burn it. Willie-nelly.
No.
You know, you've got, as I understand, you've got a, like a smoke forecasting.
Yeah, so we go through Idaho, Montana.
Yeah.
DEQ smoke management, right? And so we have to get prior approval before we can even burn. So when I did the modeling and stuff for Fontesic and French Hazard over on West Mountain, it's three hundred to four hundred acres max that we can burn per day. Because it sits down at night, it impacts Cascade, and, and then down by McGregor's or anything, it'll go down south and impact Round Valley, Clear Creek drainage. So we have to limit the amount of acres that we can burn per day.
Yeah, you can, you minimize that a lot if you can figure out a way to put it out.
Yeah.
If your garden's still letting it sit there for a month.
So, and what we can do on that is, is, you know, there's, I'll use Willow, there's, there's handline all the way around that, and there's places that we're gonna put hose lay in. And there were, there's gonna be bladder bags in there to help minimize any of the impact, the large smokes and stuff that are on those lines. Interior stuff, we don't usually go after, because then you don't know if you have a fire weakened tree or something, you don't wanna put people interior and have something come down and get somebody seriously healed or, or have a fatality.
Yeah, a little, oh, maybe with a dump of water or two in those couple spots.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I, and I'll show you kind of how we're gonna move through this with, with Lost Horse. So here's our three priority areas, and that's right on the, on our boundary, as soon as you come into the forest boundary, off the Clear Creek Road. And then everything that's, that's in here is D F development land. So you can see that we have live racks and, and just, there's not much to put into this, we're gonna plumb up as high as we can around this. There's not much for water source and unit aid up here. And, uh, so the plan is, is to, on what we can, put bladder bags in where we can and station in those areas, so that's quick response to get into them. The black checkers are primary areas that we wanna focus, we have handlines in, ready to go. This one, this unit aid is gonna be burnt in two phases. Black checker will be done in the spring, anything outside of that will be done in the fall. And the reason we're doing that is because all this grain that's back up in there is all slated for commercial harvest. So if we have fire at the falls outside of that containment lineup and there's no name drain, then we know there's a seasoning ending event. And when he was, you know, he was okay with us doing that as a fall, but he didn't feel too comfortable letting it in the spring, because it's tied in the rock outcropping.
Yeah.
And that, so we wanted to utilize the natural future where we can. This is a nice gate trail that runs right down the center ridge, can be easy to control, and we can, we can plumb that if we need to. So there's what we got for non-commercial thinning laid out in contract right now, FY twenty-two.
Wow, everything in red?
Everything in red and orange.
And the orange too, good.
Yep. That's our, that's, we laid those out last summer, they're currently in a contract. We had some hiccups with our contracting stuff, because they had to rewrite one of the IDIQ contracts, it was held us up, otherwise we'd probably be halfway done with our thinning. But that being said, is, we're gonna plow in. After the, this is the snow gold trail, the route. After that deadline, I think it's March fifteenth, is when we can start looking at opening this road up. And we're gonna do it for two reasons, one. And we're gonna do it for two reasons. One, these south-facing units here for landscape burning will be open. So we'll have access to get in there and start monitoring, cleaning line and get ready to burn. And two, it gives us access for the, for our contractors to get out there and start their work.
Yeah, and the stuff in its gold colors, that do great?
No, that's the four oh nine, or four oh five road that goes up to the top, that's back into the fork.
There's a lot of steep country.
There is some steep country in there. This is the main travel corridor up to the end of the south side. We're up there.
This is his thing or his thing?
Yep. So that's, that's a lost horse in itself. Now we're gonna come into, into Skonk. So again, the red polka dotted one is, there's five hundred and eighty-one acres of, of just landscape burning in there. The green is the commercial. The grave, oligons are our, our non-commercial plantations that we're gonna be thinning out. And then the road, or the yellow around the roadside is what's under contract for FY twenty-three, or twenty-two, for that roadside brushing and thinning. A lot of work that's gonna be happening right adjacent to Clear Creek as well. This is probably gonna come online, I'm gonna say FY twenty-five for the commercial. It'll be FY twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, for at least the layout and stuff for twenty-three for Lost Horse. Commercial's tentatively for twenty-four, twenty-five-ish, somewhere in there. All depends on, on how we move through Herdwick and French Campbell cells and Chazard. So here's our new proposal, upcoming proposal. So, this ties in the rest of West Mountain. That's what she's from. Smith Ferry down here, all the way to top, no business. French Hazard Project borders right here, everything down below that. This is the two thousand thirteen herd fire, it's in that kind of salmon color. This is our analysis area, inter-analysis area. It's all wooey. So we're looking at, we started out looking at this as just a hazardous fuels reduction, doing non-commercial thinning, landscape burning. Now we think there, there might be a commercial value in there, some of these areas. Commercial up here, and back again up through that forward portion. This is really steep, the road access. There was past commercial harvest that they'd done in there, but it was all helicopter logged back in the late nineties, early two thousands. Helicopter logging, pretty tough to, to beat the skyline, so to speak. But this, ten thousand, I didn't put it on there, there's ten thousand six hundred acres, like ten thousand six hundred forty-six acres for that planning area. So there'll be a lot of work coming out. And that's all within this priority sill area that we've been talking about. So they're gonna be throwing a lot of money at the Forest Service to get in there and treat all those high priority areas. Most of it's all wooey. Lost Horse is only about half of that's wooey. But everything else that's inside of that, all the other projects are, are wooey, essentially, so.
And, and I do wanna mention that, just over the last couple of weeks, in talking with Tammerac, is there's some potential to do some joint projects in here that would tie in with their proposed ski area expansion. And, and so Jim's gonna be working on that, so.
I think Steph is too, isn't she?
Yeah. Steph's done some work down at the bottom areas down there. The area that Dennis was talking about is circle here in the hearing, which is their, their new proposal for the runs and up here. Which would be this piece right here, this harvest. So we're looking at here of, of doing more hazardous fuels reduction, maybe some commercial harvest in there. And they can utilize our, our roads. This is inventory robo-sir area. So in the back country, which means we can harvest in there, and we'll put temp roads in there. But we have to decommission those roads within three years after.
Okay. Workshop for ski area, okay.
Yep. So, talking with Scott and Dennis and that, maybe, maybe what they can do, if they're gonna propose an access point up to the Gondola up here, is they reclassify this section with the Idaho Robo's Commission. And they reclassify that as, as not an inventory robo-sir. And that way they can put their.
That has been discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know where we are in that process yet, but that has been an alternative we've been looking at.
So we'll be working with Scott and those guys and, and the folks from Tammerac to figure out how we can benefit on NIPA site and do our commercial harvest up in this area and non-commercial thinning to get that down there. We looked at this as, this was gonna be our north, our French Hazard North project. But with it being in inventory robo-sir area, it didn't support itself. Because there was only three thousand acres of commercial harvest and thinning proposed in there. But there was, I'm gonna say eight or eleven miles of temp road proposed to get that out. So it didn't, it didn't pencil out, so it just kind of fell flat. And now we have a new avenue to come up and grab it under, either with Low Mountain or work with Tammerac to.
That's, it's pretty much the end of my proposal. So, so it's, it's a very timely opportunity, but there are a lot of things working against us. You know, we've got staffing issues, we've got eight vacancies at the office that are necessary to move these things forward. So we're, we're trying to get those filled. We've got weather, we've got climate change, we've got those variables against us. But what I'm really proud of is we have a plan. Not only do we have a plan that has been being worked on, but it's ready to implement. Now we've got the money to implement it. But we've got a long-term plan as well that is gonna protect the rest of the community to the north. And when I think of Tammerac and all that development, there's a lot of asset in there. And, and talking with Scott, Trillington, it's, it's what if Four Corners had been north? So I think, I think the timing's right, but we have hurdles to jump through, but we've got a plan. And so the, the hope is that we can continue moving forward. Now, the question that I have for you, and I'm glad Sherri's here, is, is Patty.
You're looking at my name. Sure.
Patty, sure. Is how do we get our community engaged? How do we get our community interested so that when we do NIPA, they don't sue us? When, when we do proposed actions, they understand why. And we've seen that on, on the Deschutes extensively. The community became very engaged when it was at their back door. And now we've got a group of people that are very interested, and they're very supportive. And they don't sue us every time we propose something.
Well, I think the Four Corners fire probably helped a lot. People see what fire does and how quickly it moves, and I, I think that helps empower the conversation a whole bunch, in my opinion.
Well, I agree with you, but I think there's always gonna be somebody that's gonna sue.
Sure.
And then you just gotta build that into the cost, but, you know, as far as getting folks there, you wouldn't dislike what you did here.
And so that's our plan. So on January twenty-fifth, we plan on doing the same thing for the community. Answer any questions, but our challenge is getting people there. So one thing, Patty, that you mentioned when we had our little meeting, was opportunities maybe to use the emergency texting system to invite the community, hey, please come. They may be living in Boise and have their second home here. But how do we use some creative, so there's radio?
Maybe we can use our system too. I mean, we should be able to put it in all of our newsletters and all of the information that we have. So get it to us as quickly as possible, and we'll get it out to our PR.
And I, I think one other good, really, avenue for that's a fire working group. I mean, they've already got kind of a network.
Yeah, so I sit on that board with, with Stephanie and Juan and all those guys. And we, we go through the same presentation with them as well. And we have a meeting on the fourteenth with, with those folks to go through the same presentation.
Chamber Commerce is all cities.
Yep. So we, we are working with them, you know, Elton and I have been on, on the BFC and Boise Forest Coalition, for those folks that don't know. And, and that, and, you know, they're, they're, they're a great supporter of it from start to finish.
You know, Dennis, that's, that sounds kind of stupid, but put a sign out on the road that says, "Vote today, people show up and vote." You might wanna put some kind of signage out that says, "Forest Service meeting tonight," you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Fire update.
It doesn't cost a lot of money, but it works.
Yeah, we've been posting it on our website, and we've put flyers around town and stuff like that. But we, you know, when I did the analysis for French Hazard, there's, we held three public meetings and two field trips. And nobody attended the public meetings, only a handful of folks actually went out in the field.
You gotta catch them when there's not a football game.
Something, yeah.
Harry, you got a question?
Yeah. Larry Lacks of Valley County Parks and Rec. A couple of things, you guys said you guys were gonna do the, the salvage on the Four Corners fire, you get also on the Payette?
I'm not sure what the Payette's doing on their side of it, but I know that we are looking to, everything that's in our French Hazard analysis area, we're looking to try to salvage where we can. And do road, brush out the roads, open the roads up, so we don't have impacts from trees coming down.
And the thing, so, as you know, I've been on both coalitions and the steering committee for the Payette. And that's the big discussion now, is how do we get the public involved? And I'll, I'll be honest with you, five years ago, I was not a prescribed burning fan, just from listening to the other side. And I went to, I went on a field trip when they had that fire up ninety-five in Adams County. And that fire was burning hot, it was burning fast, and it hit a treated area. It stopped. It dropped to the ground, slowed way down, and gave the opportunity to get out. It was, it was just incredible. I wish you guys had a video of that, because when we walked away, it, it taught me a big lesson. I think the questions that we always get, because on the Payette, we're trying to figure out how, like you said, how do we get to the public? And the questions are, why are we doing this now? How do we get to this point? And how do we get that information to the people? And I'll be honest with you, I think it's gonna have to be radio ads, TV ads, things like that. You could do field trips, but it's hard to get anybody to go out in the field. It really is. But you can show them the video on Facebook, on all that stuff that young kids do like the commissioners.
Social media.
Yeah, social media, thank you. Yeah. The other thing I, I wanted to mention was, I'm hoping you're not gonna have any decommission or obliterating of roads in any of the plans that come out. If you do, that is travel management. I don't mind that, or most people wouldn't mind it, as long as you look at the opportunities for using those roads for recreation before you make the decision to obliterate or decommission. And one thing that we found in the past, in fact, Railroad Saddles, you looked at the road, and yeah, that should be decommissioned. But then you look at the roads that connected to it off of other areas, and all of a sudden it was a good road. So just, please look, because we need it. With the growing population, we are not solving the recreation problem at all. We need more opportunities. And the other thing is, I, I know you guys don't have the people, so sub out NIPA.
It's made and done. Yeah, we're contracted.
Yeah, it really, it's, I don't know how else you guys are gonna do it.
The problem with, with doing contracted NIPA though, is what we're running into. It's faster for us to do it ourselves than to contract it out, because we're still doing the work regardless. We're working with them, we still have to verify their analysis.
Wow, yeah.
So, and give them our data, give them those things, and that all takes time.
Yeah, I was really hoping you had the opportunity to subcontract. It's nice seeing the commercial logging though, so that twenty-five percent of the receipts can come back to the cap.
So French, for example, French Hazard was subcontracted out.
Yeah.
We, we drafted up their proposed action, a purpose and need proposed action. And then there was so much issues, there's still current issues with that NIPA, that we're having to go back and fix things.
Wow. Yeah. All right, thanks, guys. That's all I had. I appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah, and just for the social side of things, we are looking at doing flyers that have QR codes or links.
Sure.
That when we do our public meetings, people can go in and pull those up and, and get that information. It makes it a lot easier, and we can post that on all of our websites and that as well, so.
Well, if this fire had burned in nineteen ninety-four or two thousand, you know, you would have a whole, whole lot more, I mean, just automatic support for what you're doing. You had a weak year this year for burning, and that's, it's great, but it's unfortunate in, in some ways too, because the needed emphasis there from the people.
And, you know, to, somewhat to our defense, this was when we signed that NIPA decision in two thousand and eighteen for French Hazard. We had it laid out, we're gonna go Willow, Herdwick, and then back to French Campbell, the middle piece. And then we had the, the epidemic of, you know, tussock moth come in. And so we, we did Fontestic salvage there, TE there, and then they also did the sage chin. Those became our priorities to try to get that economic value before we lost it. So that, everything got postponed. If that wouldn't have got postponed, we wouldn't have seen the effects that we're seeing now, because the treatments would have been done.
Well, and that's going forward, you're gonna have the same kind.
Absolutely.
You have to build that into the program.
Yes.
And the plan, because it's never gonna be at the end what it looks like in the front.
That's right, for sure.
Dennis, Jim, thank you guys for coming in. We're out of time.
Thank you.
Put the word out and get something to our PR gal, Mackenzie, and she can help with that too. You never know who shows up on a deal like that.
Never know who's gonna buy pizza.
That's right.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Have a great one.
Good presentation.
Okay, our next agenda is.
Take all the candy you can eat.
Our next agenda is an action item. This is an executive session to seventy-four, two oh six, one eight, to consider hiring a public officer at this time.
Mr. Commissioner, could we have about five minutes before we stop that?
Yeah, let's go into executive first, and then we'll take the break.
Mr. Chairman, did, did you wanna do the commissioner meeting minutes in the letter?
We can do those at the end of the day, can't we? At the end of the day?
Whenever you are.
Yeah, let's do it, because these folks are here. And get through the P and Z hearings, and then we'll come back and finish that, that work.
Okay.
Okay? So, well, let's just take a five-minute break, and then we'll go into executive. Break now, be the time. Thank you, sir. I need a motion going to executive for seventy-four, two oh six, one eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for, I don't know, seventy-four, two oh six, one eight, to consider hiring a public official.
I second that. Motion is second, by roll call, please.
Maupinai.
Allenai. Ms. Rick, I and Doug will be in at two twelve.
Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to have a couple of minutes to kind of clear the fog out about how we're gonna proceed with this prior to making these actual interviews.